Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the study special session. It's a study session we're going to have tonight. Two items on the agenda. The first item is discussion regarding proposed amendments to the animal control ordinance. And I believe we have a staff presentation.
My name is Jeannie Snyder. I'm one of the Assistant City Attorneys, and I've also served on the Animal Welfare Oversight Committee as staff liaison for a long time. You've got your packet on how this process has been going. This Animal Welfare Oversight Committee has spent a lot of time going over these proposed amendments, especially since September. They spent almost every meeting reviewing these amendments. In November, we actually had a public meeting, and then in December, we had a marathon Animal Welfare Oversight Committee meeting to go over everything that went over, talked about in the public. There's a number of updates. Captain Barber is going to go through the updates. He's divided them up into tiers, and I'll let him explain how that will work. But what I wanted to do mainly is just to thank everybody who has spent so much time working on these proposed amendments, especially the Animal Welfare Committee. And I want to give them the honor that they are due and mention their names. Kristy Wicker, Sandra Mora Fournault, who I tell her, I lovingly call her the snake lady, and she's making me kind of learn to love snakes. I haven't gone over to her house and touched one yet, but I've been thinking about it. Kim Fairbanks, Mark Howery is our co-chair, Rebecca Bean is our other co-chair, Dr. David Biles is our newest member, and he's a veterinarian, Jennifer Kidney, and at the, right now, I believe Councilmember Beerman is our city council staff liaison. In the past, Councilmember Beerman, and then Councilmember Hickman, and Councilmember Wilson, and Councilmember Carter was on the committee. So I know we've got a lot of friends that understand these amendments and are here to help us get them passed. So I also wanted to, I mentioned the public meeting. I really want to thank the public. We have had a lot of input from the public, from the public meeting, social media, phone calls, emails, and that is, that makes it sometimes a little harder, but it makes it a lot easier to be able to know what the public's thinking. And we've been able, and we think we've got everything put into these proposed amendments. If you have any questions, again, I'm going to let Captain Barber go through that. And I want to do one more bit of introduction. Trey, I keep telling him I can't pronounce your name. He's our Animal Welfare Supervisor of the officers. He is the guy in the field, and he knows what's going on. Captain Barber, who now has been, had another assignment, but stayed on with this assignment because he's the one who's actually gone through, made the updates, and is going to do the presentation. Major David Tyscher is now with the Police Department that is over the Animal Welfare Center, I suppose. They tell me he's actually cleaned out some of the animal cages. And then this is Mark Bechtel, our Animal Welfare Shelter Supervisor. And so we have got a great staff. I'm not going to introduce or mention all the staff that is down at the shelter, but we have a great staff, and they do a lot of work. And I think we've made so much progress, as I know I'm looking at the council members that have been here from the beginning, over the last probably decade now. And this is our third round of amendments of the animal ordinances. And I think that once these go through, we will have revised, or changed, or made additions to every section in the animal code. So I'm going to let Captain Barber come up and go through the changes that we've gone through. And if you have any questions, I'm going to let Captain Barber do all the answering.
Then I can defer to Jeannie again. Good evening. I appreciate you all's time. As you all know, most of you have been involved in this process at some level. So throughout this, the different steps and the various propositions we've had out there. So I know some of you have some good insight already with what's going here. Our hope is to be able to answer any questions you all have tonight. As Ms. Snyder mentioned, we have split these up into three different groups. It's the same way we presented them with the public meeting. And really, what we've done is divided them into three areas. The first one that I'd like to start with is the Tier Three groups, if you all are okay with that. And really, those are more administrative updates. They are our minor updates. They don't really affect anything we do in-house, in the shelter, or the Police Department, or the city. And what they do is actually provide some language clarification for things, especially related to the difference between Mark's position as the shelter manager and Trey's position as the Animal Welfare Supervisor, which has been a new addition or delineation in the last four or five years. Unless you all have specific issues, I don't intend on going through every one of those unless you would just like me to, because most of them, like I said, are very clerical in nature. So I guess unless you have other direction desires, if you have any questions on those, then we'll deal with those now. And otherwise, we'll move to the more pertinent things that I think are going to actually cause some discussion and questions.
Do any council members have any questions on the Tier Three? All right.
Thank you. So next, if you're okay with that, I'd like to move to the Tier One section. These are items that have significant updates to the city ordinances, but they're not, they're not really controversial or concerning to most people. They come to you with recommendation from the Oversight Committee unanimously, as well as staff, some recommendations of things that we do need to update. Like Mrs. Snyder said, we've had three revisions of these in the last 10 or 12 years, and they're different things that have been presented to us and that we have seen and things we need to update as we move forward. Again, I can go through these individually if you'd like. There's only, I think, six of them. Or, like I said, you all, we're all, most all of you were here, at least for parts of the public meeting, and have had, been involved in some of these discussions. So I'm open to whatever your preference is on these.
Could you just highlight them real quickly?
Certainly. So the first one is related to adequate shelter. And really, what this does is just add in some clarification and some parameters for what adequate shelter is. Mostly, of course, in our region, we're dealing with heat and cold and wind. And so what these do is they add some further explanation of what that definition is and what's required from pet owners, especially when we're dealing with dogs and dog houses and some things of that nature. Our current language is kind of vague in some areas, and we've had some limited issues and concerns. They're pretty well covered in our cruelty and neglect ordinances and state laws. We obviously want to provide that clarification, not only for our staff, but for the public. A lot of people have some questions on those. The second one, the definition of owner, currently, there's nothing in our ordinances that clarify exactly what an owner is by date or time. So if somebody just kind of holds on to an animal for a long period of time, they keep the animal for a long period of time, and they just kind of assume ownership of it. So it kind of adds some requirements there. Some of this comes in to when animals are found, and they, nobody claims them, nobody reports them as lost or stolen or anything of that nature. And at what point is the owner then able to come in and say, hey, this is my animal, and I have some rights and some responsibilities for it, which obviously impacts them as an owner, as well as us as a staff and from the shelter standpoint, trying to work with that animal. It also affects some of those owners when they're dealing with medical care, of course. Some of the care they're needing has to have the owner's involvement.
Could you clarify? I know that we talked about after 14 days, but what if somebody's on vacation for two or three weeks or out of town, and they come back?
Certainly.
And they realize, hey, that's actually my dog. It's been 21 days. What are the rights of the?
We would obviously work with them the best we can. What happens currently is when we have these come up is we get ahold of the person who now has the animal. Every one I have dealt with, which hasn't been an extensive number of them, but when we contact them and say, hey, their owner's now home, and they're here, and it's their animal, they've been more than willing to work with them, giving them up. This discussion's come up a number of times, especially in public meetings. And most of these animals we're dealing with, of course, if you're gone for 10, 12, 13, 14, or even 20 days, somebody's supposed to hopefully caring for that animal. And so our hope is at that point that they have also stepped in and say, hey, I know I'm caring for my brother's dog, and my dog, my brother's dog's now missing, that I'm going to contact somebody trying to find it. If that report's been made that it's missing, obviously, we'll act on those as soon as we can to get them reunited.
Thank you. Any questions? That's most.
Your mic on. My mic's on now. How does the Police Department currently handle a theft of a dog? Like, I'm just curious, because a lot of times in the rescue world, people with good intentions will take the dog in and not do the things that need to happen to find the owner. And so if an owner comes up 16 days later and says, hey, but that's my dog, you know, how do we handle that currently?
So it kind of varies on the scenario, because when we're dealing with theft of animals or specific statutes in ordinance that pertain to them, but we're usually also dealing with things related to burglaries or trespassings and criminal charges beyond just the animal. So it depends on how it starts. If it's just strictly dealing with the animal, then the Animal Welfare Officers and Trey's team work to investigate that and determine ownership the best we can. And at some point, if it's reasonable, present charges to the district attorney's office. The ownership of the animal under state law is deemed as a property. So it kind of comes down to a court issue at some level. But the vast majority of times, those are resolved as soon as we contact them. Very, very rarely, of course, would we ever expect anybody to knowingly take somebody's pet. And then, once they're aware of that, they usually give it back.
Thank you.
No problem. Number three in that section is the sale or disposition of animals that are not retrieved by owners. And there's three different parts to this one. So the first one is related to our current stray hold time. It's kind of what is referred to by most people, and it's the time that an animal's at the shelter before the shelter can do anything with the animal. And so in our current language, there is not a real clear delineation of when does day one start on the count of the five days? And do holidays and weekends count? And if the shelter's closed, does that day count? And obviously, there's some reasonableness kicks in, and no, they shouldn't. But under our current ordinance, there's no clarification for that. So it leaves some vagueness. The number officially moves from five days to three days, but with those added periods and those added timeframes, it only affects, if I recall correctly, if an animal comes in on Friday or Wednesday or something, there's two days of the week. Okay. There's only two days of the week that it shortened it, and it shortened it by one day. Every other day, it actually extended the stay beyond, it either stayed at five or extended it. So we don't see an impact within that realm for that section. But it just, again, clarifies that language and helps staff be able to understand the expectations and the community to understand why their animal's not there, or why it's been spayed, neutered, and they are now claiming it, or whatever the case is. The second part of that that has changed, or that we're recommending change under Section Two, is related to animals that they come into our facility, most often through law enforcement action, usually when the person that's with the animal, be it the owner or somebody's watching it or transporting it, is usually incarcerated. So what happens now is there's no real timeframe or no clear expectation in ordinances of what happens when a person is stopped on a traffic stop, they're impaired, they're drinking and driving, or something of that nature, they have a warrant, or whatever the case is, and they have an animal with them. Patrol obviously does their best to make sure the animal goes home with somebody that night. If that's not an option, or the person's unable to provide anything with, or any contact for somebody else to us, then what happens is they call the Animal Welfare Officer out, and they impound the dog for safekeeping. Right now, there's that issue, and we've had people go into incarceration for 20, 30 days, especially if it's a state charge, even longer. And if they are unwilling to sign that animal over to us, or give us relinquish the ownership, or give it to somebody else, then we are stuck in that quandary of, okay, well, the animal can't sit in the shelter forever. I mean, that's what we're stuck with right now. The way we treat it currently is what's in the ordinance, which is, once we make contact with them, we know they're sober, we know there's, that they know where their animal is, that we start that stray hold time. Obviously, there's some reasonableness in this. This is not a requirement that if the animal's there for three or five days, that it has to move out by any means. If they're making efforts, they're making steps in order to do it, they're having some significant hardships, then we will obviously work with them. Our job and goal is obviously to get the animal back with their owner, if at all possible. But sometimes, due to their circumstances and their willingness or lack of willingness to work with us, especially as part of the law enforcement community, they don't give us that. So it just kind of clarifies that. The third part of that deals with a similar circumstance, but usually, it's most commonly when we're dealing with mental health consumers. We have a high population of mental health consumers in the city. A large part, population or part of that community has a, they have animals. And so if they go into crisis, if they're seeking treatment, if they're in treatment, some of those treatments usually are a few days, they're stabilized, they're back at home, and the animal's back with them, which is great, and that's the hopeful result. But some people need longer-term treatment. We have literally had dogs at the shelter for three, four, five months while the person is trying to get help and get stable on their feet. And not only just for mental health conditions, but also for some people who have had some domestic relationship issues and things like that, and that we have no mechanism to move them forward. What we currently do is what's in here, is that after a reasonable period of time, we contact a court, and we have the court give us an order saying, hey, release the animal. And at that point, we seek custody of it. So far, those animals have been very, very playful and very friendly, and kind of become the shelter pet, for lack of terms, and have really kind of helped staff and become part of the family. But obviously, if we had an animal that wasn't, then we have an animal sitting potentially in a kennel for many, many months on end, so we want to have an ability to formalize that process that we already use. Any questions related to those three? Very good. So the next series of them that are related to that are clerical updates. On Section Eight of that, there is an addition requested related to the potential to later open up a TNR, a trap and neuter return, or a return to field program. There's not a current plan to do this. It's just one of these that at some point, if we have staffing and the ability to do these things, it would be something the staff would want to look at doing and/or work with the Oversight Committee for some advice and some abilities. This is done in other communities currently. Long story short, basically, the animals that come into the shelter, primarily usually around cats, that are, there's other means and places for them to go, and some other places we can get them safely, giving us the ability to go down those venues. Some cities do have sections and some processes where if a stray is picked up, it comes into the shelter, it's spayed and neutered, it's vaccinated, it's returned to where it was located. That's a balancing act, of course, depending on why it was picked up. If it was picked up at a warehouse and it's not causing any problems, then that's a different story than, of course, one that's in the neighborhood, causing significant problem for a neighbor or something of that nature. It's not a plan right now to institute that process, but it kind of gives them the framework to starting through that process should it become up someday. On the, I think that was it in that section? Just one minute, I think I missed one, I apologize. Oh, on 407, the, the, some restrictions on sale of dogs or cats in 3407. What this is, this is current language that's in there, but it does not currently include city property or a median or a city park. So basically, people can't go run a puppy mill and come into the park and start selling the puppies on the side of the road, those type things. They can't currently do that on private property. That's already prohibited without property owners' consent. So they can't show up at Walmart unless Walmart's willing to allow them to sell animals in the parking lot, which is usually not the case. But right now, there's nothing to extend that to our property, so that's all that is regarding. Related in 305, there's a little bit of information in here, and really, what it ties into is we have a clarification from a prior typo between poisonous and venomous related to reptiles, technical speak, but to make sure it's accurate. And then the next section is relating to securing and transporting animals within the city who may pose a risk to the public, that basically requires them to be in a safe container, to make sure they're contained and treated properly and safely. And if they have complied to an area that may need some sort of insurance or liability coverage or something of that nature, then gives us an authority to make sure they have that in order to have the animals in the city. And that's obviously a subsection of a very, very long, lengthy ordinance that goes on and on for pages on end. And that is the end of the Section Two items. Or, I'm sorry, Section One. They're all starting to blur together already.
Councilman Beerman?
Could you go back and talk about Section 3-206, the addition to the owner relinquishment of dogs and cats?
Certainly.
Did you just review that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did skip over that, I apologize. So this isn't related to owner relinquishments. We currently have an ordinance and do this fairly regularly, where citizens of Norman, obviously, if they're unable to care for their animals, they're in some conditions that it's better for them not to have it, and they have exhausted means where they can't find a safe place where they can bring it to the shelter. The shelter will ingest it into the system, make sure it's safe, make sure it's vaccinated, nude, spayed, neutered, and open it up for adoption, or move it to rescue, whatever the best solution is for that animal. What this additional language is doing is allowing the ability for staff, if they choose to at some future point, to limit some of the times and the scope that, when we do those receptions. Right now, what happens is, you all know, obviously, just like the rest of the city, we run with a pretty bare staff. And what happens is, especially on early mornings, and especially following holidays and really holiday weekends, and the weekends in general, they're very, very busy on Monday mornings. And they're dealing with a bunch of stray intakes and a bunch of other animals that have been found on the street, because people have held them over the weekend or bringing them in. And so what happens is, if somebody comes in to surrender their animal at that point, while that is, they're welcomed and they're allowed to do that, we don't have the time or the resources to dedicate to them at that point that we should. And so by asking them to come back at a later point and kind of setting that as the policy, that at this point, they would be required to come in at a later point, unless they didn't have an option, so that we could spend that time with them and get the medical information, get the history and the behavioral information, so we can try to make sure the animal goes back to the same, the safe place. What we get from a lot of people when they bring their animal in to us, of course, is the animal is perfectly fine, it's healthy, it's great, we just can't have it because of some circumstance. And there's almost always something else going on with that animal. And what we find is there's a high level of returns on those adoptions from surrenders because we don't understand the underlying issue. So this basically gives the staff some ability to say, hey, we're only going to accept these after 10 o'clock in the morning and before 3 o'clock, or whatever the parameters are, obviously, within a reason. If somebody doesn't have a chance and they don't have an ability to get there in those times, of course, we'll make exceptions for them and let them in. It's not like we're going to try to deny anybody for those things whatsoever. It just allows us to have that, try to stagger that workload so we can work with them. The other part of that is related to some paperwork requirements, and really, those, what happens is now is people believe that they can show up to the shelter, and sometimes they get spooked, they are afraid, they're embarrassed, whatever the case is, and we're busy, and they simply drop the animal in the lobby and leave, and say, well, we're surrendering it to you, and they leave. They don't sign over the paperwork necessary for us. And what happens is, by not doing that, the animal comes as a stray. And instead of being, you know, treated and taken care of and moved into adoption potentially within a few hours, it's with us for five days as a stray. So it kind of puts some emphasis and some education on folks who are reading that going, oh, okay, I might have to do some stuff when I get there in order to make sure that process, that transaction's done legally, and we can do what's best for the animal.
So I totally understand the paperwork issue. My concern is that with the limited hour, I say limited, that, you know, it's sometimes difficult for someone to take the time to get to the shelter by 10, especially on a weekday if they have to work. So my concern is that by codifying it this way and not having it just be an Animal Welfare Center policy, that in a way, this is codifying understaffing. You know, as someone who wants to give you all the staffing that you need, I would much rather see the demonstrated need for it instead of, instead of codifying it in an ordinance. So that's really where my concern comes into the limitations established by ordinance. I totally understand, you know, making it a policy that while we're down in Kennel Welfare Tech or two, that we're going to be limiting owner surrenders in this way, but doing so by ordinance concerns me versus by policy.
No, that's, and my apologies, that's come up, and I didn't bring this forward. The reason we're looking at putting language in ordinance but not specifying the dates and times restrictions is to allow that, that ability to kind of ebb and flow. The way we feel in some discussions of legal is the way it's written currently, we don't have the ability to make those restrictions because it says, you're going to take the animal, that we shall take it every time. And so our, kind of, we don't want to have that dilemma between the public and us, and them saying, well, the ordinance says you're going to take it, and us saying, well, our policy says we don't. Of course, the ordinance wins, as it should. And so that's kind of, we're just moving that door. I don't believe, and Mark and Trey can confirm this for me, make sure, while I've moved around, that there's no plan on doing this imminently. But we wanted those abilities, like you said, from time to time. We don't want to have that conflict between policy and ordinance when it occurs. And I have no doubt, while the Oversight Committee doesn't deal directly with, you know, the operation day-to-day, I have no doubt they'll be kept in very clear conversation with that and kept up to date to hopefully appeal to some of those concerns and make sure they're not being overly aggressive with it.
Thanks.
Councilman Beerman, have a question?
Yes.
Yes.
This is one of the proposed changes by staff that concerns me. In the last round of iterations to the animal ordinance, this was something that I think many people in the community thought was important, that, because prior administration was not necessarily accepting owner relinquishments, and were backlogging them and discouraging people essentially from owner relinquishments, at least from what I heard in the community. And so it was important, I felt like, that this is a publicly funded shelter and taxpayer-funded, and that part of the customer service is that if people who are already having a hard time bringing their dog down to surrender their animal, which is most people, it's not an easy thing to do, that we are accommodating and are customer service-oriented, and I love our staff, and I know they do the best they can with the staff that we have. So I don't mean it that way, but that if they're turned away or told to come back because of potentially our inconvenience, that that's not maybe in the best interest of customer service and/or that animal, because there were also reports of people then beginning to say, and potentially even beginning to actually do, where they would just drop the dog off. I mean, you know, whether it was right outside the gate of the shelter, or out in Ward Five, or somewhere in our community, and that's disservice in a sense to the animal, because we had, one could argue, administrative or bureaucratic red tape requirements for the owner surrender to occur. And while I want to be accommodating to staff and provide some flexibility, I still think it's important that our standard be that if you are an owner, and if you are an owner that lives in the city of Norman, and therefore a taxpayer, and you want to surrender your animal, that we should be accommodating of that opportunity as a service that our community's providing for, and the taxpayers are paid for that shelter. And so I'm concerned that this is a step back, potentially in that direction, or a step back away from that goal. While I understand that we are currently, from the time I was on the Animal Oversight Committee, providing some flexibility in working with owners when they brought in a surrender to schedule that or to work with them, you know, I've never heard that that was not working. I understand that if, if the owner, you know, says, no, I can't, I got to do it now, that we may have to interrupt whatever we are doing and serve them because the ordinance requires it. I'm just concerned that if we begin to limit the window of time of when people could come in and surrender an animal that may or may not work with their, their schedule, that we could end up having more animals just dumped in our community, and that's more of a burden on Trey and his staff, and it's a disservice to the animals as well as the owner, from my concern. And so I don't, I guess I'm not sure that I see the need for this change, you know, and it sounds like it's not an imminent change that is intended to be implemented. And unless, I mean, I'm just curious, is there, I don't recall when I was on the Animal Oversight Committee, that the efforts, the informal efforts to schedule owner surrenders was not working. Did I miss something, or have things changed?
I think, I think you're right in both regards, and I agree with you. To clarify, I don't, from a customer service standpoint, especially under the conditions you're laying out, if somebody were to show up, as a policy, we may say, from an educational standpoint, we'd prefer people to come in these times. If somebody showed up at the door, my expectation, if it's my staff, is that they're still going to take care of that animal and take, do what they need to at that point. It wouldn't be a prohibition that during these times, we won't take it, other than we're just closed. To your request regarding issues, when I first moved down to the shelter, which has been almost two years ago now, I believe, we were so short-staffed, there was a significant problem. Now, we were able to take every animal, and we were doing it. What we weren't doing is getting, we weren't doing a good job at all of getting that information from the owners. And it caused us a significant spike in concerns of returns and bites and other issues we were having with the animals, which is kind of what instigated it. But to that point, I think that's a very fine balance, you're absolutely right. And our concern comes into that ability to set that in contrast of ordinance, mostly as an educational campaign, if nothing else. But that, that could potentially be resolved through other means of saying, hey, we're not going to prohibit it by a policy, but through an educational campaign, asking people not to do it, it may achieve both purposes, you're right.
Okay. I just, I would prefer to have, well, one, I'd prefer if there's staff needed for a request for staff to be made, and/or two, I'm just concerned that if at some point in time, action is taken that says, you know, from 10 to 2 on Tuesdays and Thursdays is owner surrender period of time, that that's going to discourage potential owner surrenders, and that's going to result in more animals, probably more inhumanely dumped just in our community. That's my fundamental concern, you know, and that was part of why I was an advocate for the city accepting owner surrenders. And the language we have right now does talk to, you know, the owner may be asked to return on a later date for a scheduled relinquishment, you know. I understand that, you know, that it says if space is not available at the Animal Welfare Center, the owner may be asked to return. So we have some language already in there, providing some flexibility about asking them to come back. I know it's associated with space in the facility. And so I feel like we try to leave some flexibility in there for the staff, knowing that if the, you know, we don't want the shelter to feel like they have to accept owner surrenders and then immediately, you know, potentially euthanize another animal to free up a cage. That was part of the debate and discussion we had last time. And so I'm sensitive to this issue, and I want to, I want to work with you guys. I'm just concerned that, you know, because this was a significant topic last time, I'm just concerned about taking a step back, and I'd like to think about it some more, maybe I'd like to think about it some more and maybe hear, you know, um, some more feedback from staff at a later time.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, so tier two are some questions and some things I think we'll just, um, have some more discussion. These come in kind of a split difference. There's some of the things in this tier that both the, the staff and the oversight committee have said that they're, that we think are beneficial and recommended and would like to move forward with. There's some other things that have some split opinions on them amongst, both amongst the oversight committee and staff. And there's even one that we're going to get into that honestly, there's not a decision on what you all want to see. And that's kind of one of the things we need from you all, from a staff standpoint is knowing what you want to see, um, when these proposals are brought to you all for, as a council. And so with that, we'll just go through them in order. The first one relates to a, a definition or some additional information related to cruelty of animals in 301. And what this is really talking about is we have a few sporadic instances, mostly outside of our jurisdiction, but highly advertised of, of animals that are usually died, usually around Easter time. Animals that are died and were altered for the purposes of gimmicks and promotional events and things of that nature. So trying to codify some language to help prevent those as well as prevent animals from being given away as, as games at a fair and things of that nature. So that's what that is pertaining to. That obviously comes with recommendation from both staff and from the oversight committee, uh, being in support of those, those additions. On the second one, um, reporting found animals. This one, there's currently nothing in our language that requires, this goes back to some of the discussion we had earlier about the, the, the definition of an owner and, and the animals that are found. There's nothing that currently requires people who find an animal to contact us and let us know it, that they found it. So this establishes some parameters and some guidelines, um, reporting or requiring people to report the animal to us. I believe Councilmember Clark mentioned that the person who finds the animal doesn't bring it back. I could be wrong, maybe it's Councilmember Wilson, so I apologize, somebody on this side. So, uh, mentioned those concerns about people finding the animal and not bringing it forward. So this is requires that notification be made to us. They don't have to bring the animal to us. They can still house it at their home. They can still own it at the end of the, the period if they, um, do, uh, nobody claims it similar to like we treat other property found under state law. So, um, this just requires that notification, which isn't currently there, which obviously we think is a big step in helping, um, provide that, that nudge just people to go, oh, it's a really cute puppy and I'll just keep it. When in reality is it's somebody's pet potentially and we want to get it back to them if we at all possibly can. The next one on 401 relates to tethering. This one comes with a split recommendation from the oversight committee and staff. Oversight committee, um, is recommending that it be instituted and staff recommends that it do not be. So what this does, it adds, um, as you can see, some rely or requirements related basically it bans tethering of animals at any time except under certain conditions and only when authorized by an animal welfare officer or a police officer. And then it provides some clarification that if an exemption is allowed for some short-term reason of a fence is down from a tree or whatever the case is, that these are parameters of when it can be tethered to basically, um, to make it a responsible tethering. Oversight committee, like I said, recommended, um, by a six to one vote that this be, um, recommended for passage. Staff's concerns with this are related to a number of things. First and foremost, we believe that, um, the concerns that, um, have been raised about tethering while very valid and, and it is often or sometimes done inappropriately are covered under current cruelty rules. We handled these cases pretty, I would say fairly regularly, but from occasion we do deal with them. And obviously if there's a, a nature where the dog or the cat is under distress, if it is in some way endangered or imminent harm, then obviously we can deal with those under cruelty rules and laws that are currently on the ordinance without prohibiting, prohibiting tethering as a whole. Um, there are times that we deal with animals who absolutely need to be tethered. And our fear is that if they're doing it safely and they're doing it humanely, that it's better than that happened, then the animal will get out or escape or be run stray or the, the owner decide that they have to move into a rental property that doesn't have the ability to house it safely for a shorter period of time. That they have those options to do that safely versus either surrender the animal or get rid of it or dump it, heaven forbid. So there's some of the concerns that we have with them, um, as to where those come. Obviously there are a number of items, especially the things in number two that we fully support, which is making sure that it's done safely when it's done. The delineation between the two is when that, when it's, when it's appropriate to do so, um, at least under ordinance.
So could you clarify for me which you said parts of two you like, but what, what part of staff? The staff wants to do away with one and keep two or what's the staff?
There were different versions throughout this process. There was originally a version that was submitted that said, no tethering at all with no requirements. Staff said that we have the concerns as we've talked about. Then we had had at one point a version that said, hey, let's leave our ordinance as it is now, but we can add in some language just for educational purposes, which basically would mirror the stuff in number two. It's not presented to you tonight. Um, I don't think it's necessarily necessary to say that word twice. However, from an educational standpoint, you know, putting that in ordinance may not be a bad idea to help clarify for people what is reasonable. Most of the folks we deal with, of course, when we deal with them, they do care about their animals. They're very passionate about them. They don't realize the dangers they're exposing them to. They don't see the things that we see and the negative outcomes that we see and some of you see in your, um, your careers and your jobs too. So making those, those, um, efforts to ensure that the education of the public is out there and that people are doing it safely. But again, anytime it's not done, the reason we don't have those as an option one, option two is because we still feel that those, if those items in number two aren't met, the animal doesn't have shelter, it's being entangled, it's doing those other things. It falls under a cruelty or neglect area and we already can interact on that now and due currently.
Any comments from the animal welfare, uh, committee about, it said six to one, but I didn't read the minutes.
We've had both on both sides. This one's been fairly well split. The, the public to an extent seemed to be, um, preferring not limiting it, but we had it, we had people on both sides. Um, and for the reasons that we talked about, I mean, obviously there's a concern about it being done safely versus not being done at all. Some of the concerns that we have as well is that when we talk about this last part about exemptions being made, especially in our environment, the time of year we're coming into now, or even the ice storms we had this weekend, there's times when people have to have, uh, be able to tether them. The fences are blown down or taken down by storms or ice or whatever the case is. The, the handling of those exemptions and the tracking of them and the duration of them becomes a burden, um, to a large extent, making sure they're done safely. So there's some concerns in there related to that too, that we haven't touched on, but the public was fairly well split.
Remember some healthy discussion at the public.
I have no doubt that this is one or two that will stir a very lengthy and healthy discussion.
Councilmember had a question.
Um, so I'm, I will let Councilmember Wilson, if she wants, talk about the situations in which our current animal cruelty ordinances do not address some of these issues. But, um, I do think it's important to point out that the way this is written, it doesn't completely outlaw tethering. What it does is simply ensure that if you're going to be putting your dog out on a tether, that it is supervised. And I think that that's an important point. The, a lot of the concerns that were brought up in the public meeting were people saying, I want to be able to sit out with my dog in the backyard, but they're a fence jumper and I only have a four foot fence. So tethering is the only way to keep the dog in the yard. Totally understandable when you're out there with them. The second thing I wanted to point out is that the veterinarian who sits on this committee is vehemently opposed to tethering. Under no circumstances does he believe that unsupervised tethering of a dog is safe. There are any number of things that can happen to a tethered dog in a yard. And frankly, we had a client dog not long ago who was in their own yard and two dogs broke in and attacked that dog and that dog died. That dog was tethered, it would have even less of an ability to defend itself, particularly if no one is out there to help protect that dog. And if I recall, the second option of the ordinance was simply to part two, without the exemption. It was that if your dog was going to be outside, these are the situations in which it can be done. And that was not approved by the animal welfare oversight committee. They felt like number one, with the stipulations of if your fence does blow down and you need to have an outside solution, that those things, those things apply. But from what I have heard from situations that people have relayed to me as the liaison to the animal welfare oversight committee and to members of the committee, this is a concern that our current cruelty ordinances cannot, do not adequately address. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Councilmember Clark?
How does one request an exemption?
So that will be a procedural slash policy thing that'll have to be developed if this, um, is enacted. Uh, my expectation or best guess at this point, although tentative, would be that they would contact the shelter and either request that, um, through an animal welfare officer or if it's after hours and, and the urgency were, um, upon us, then through an officer. My bet is if it's an officer, it's because we got a call for service on the dog and the dog was stray or running free. And they said, hey, I have to tie it up in order to make sure that it's out there and, and get that exemption.
Would it involve a visit to the home?
I think it probably would, um, or at least could. I think it would probably depend on the scenario and the situation. I think for a large part, it probably would on most of them, but if we're talking about, you know, a windstorm that comes through and they have, you know, three or four dozen of them in a day, then I'm sure they would not. Only have five officers down there. They wouldn't have a chance to get to them.
How many of these would you foresee exemptions being requested? Based on maybe feedback you've gotten from residents?
Honestly, don't have a number. We've had, um, again, pretty split number. I would venture, I hate to put a number on it, but I would expect several dozen. Pretty early, uh, of people who are already in circumstances where they're doing it safely, where they believe they are. And some that, some that we know are and would need it, but I honestly don't know where that number would balance, um, until it's really, um, codified and out there.
Cause I have a resident who reached out to me, uh, and asked me to vote no on that one because she has a very large backyard and she has let their dog and it's fenced and everything, but somehow her dog is getting attacked by the dogs on the other side. And so they tether it so it can't go all the way to the fence. And so she was very concerned about that because otherwise she has to keep him on a leash to take him outside. And so, uh, I guess supervising would be an option. But it seems like you would just want to let your dog outside. So that was her concern with it. And so, uh, the exemption is, is helpful. And I would need more information on that to make sure it's not an onerous pride, you know, uh, process on either residents or staff.
Certainly. And, and we've heard those same, I mean, we had the public discussion, when people have those discussions, we have people out in, um, more rural areas discussing if inner and outer perimeters are concerns about animals being around them. Whether they're coyotes and things of nature too. And so we have heard that.
Thank you.
Quick question to follow up on that. What's the duration of an exemption?
There's not one delineated by policy or by ordinance. That would have to be a policy thing that would probably come up to whatever would be reasonable. I mean, if it's.
It's not a lifetime exemption or seven days or?
I wouldn't expect that it would be a lifetime. My, my, my belief is that if it were a long-term one, if it were similar to the situation or something that was safe and they were doing it, um, in a good condition, that there would have to be some renewal process at some point. Maybe that involves a visitor or an evaluation to make sure it's there. I wouldn't want this exhaustive list to just keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So that, those are things that we would have to work out that, uh, if it were to come in place would be there, uh, probably a procedural issue that the shelter would have to work in.
Councilperson Wilson?
Yeah, I appreciate how hard this, this type of an ordinance is to craft, enforce, defend, manage, all the things. I, I get it. And I appreciate you guys doing all the work that you've done on this. Just to kind of speak to the reason why I actually got brought into looking at this is that we have those times where a dog has been identified, for me specifically, it's usually dogs, that is sitting on a hill for five years and people have tried to do things for this, this animal and they can't. And we don't have anything to address that. So I really feel like this does address it. And I, I, I guess in the administrative part of the tracking, I, I, I feel like that we have a very reasonable staff at our animal control offices and that they would come up with a, you know, nobody's going to call and complain about the really happy Chihuahua that's 900 years old. It's sitting out in the front yard, you know, on a sunny day, you know, but for his safety is now on a tether. I get those situations, but I, I just think those are going to be so rare that that, I, I think initially we might have some just kind of over zealous, uh, rule followers or something that are, you know, getting those exemptions. But I think eventually I, I, I feel that it would settle down to a complaint basis. Am I crazy to think that?
No, I don't think so at all. I think that, um, based on the current, um, call load and activities that outside of complaints or obvious things that, that the officers see out in the field now, that they wouldn't proactively be going and looking for these.
So we're not going to enact a SWAT team going door to door looking for dogs on tethers?
That I can tell you for sure we're not.
Cats at large or any of those kinds of, just making sure.
Councilmember?
How many dogs have we, um, taken into custody based on cruelty as a result of tethering? Have there been any?
Two, at least two. I know that we at least had one or two, the first winter I was down there even.
And were they returned to the owner?
You know, both, neither of them were? No, sir.
You know, over what period of time that was?
It was the winter I was down there.
And I think that's part of what led to some of these conversations about the ordinance change that maybe Councilmember Wilson was referring to. I guess one of the things I wanted to clarify is my understanding right now, the ordinance allows for an animal to be tethered on a chain, right?
The current ordinance would allow that if it were in a, it not like a log chain or anything overly heavy. It can't unduly burden the animal or allow it to become entangled, tangled, things like that would obviously fall under neglect or cruelty issue. But really what it says now is it has to be designed for or commercially sold for the use of that, that product.
But a chain is allowable as long as it doesn't only duly burden the dog?
If it's. Yeah. So you'll see some of them, they're more like rope, like swings. They're more like swing chains where they're sealed up. You'll see them occasionally sold. And then we've had people who have, we have taken their dogs and they have had commercially available items on them. And of course they're not reasonable. Of course, once you explain it to them, they realize, oh.
And do we allow, uh, dogs to be tethered on choke chains?
Under current ordinance?
I don't think the current ordinance prohibits that, right?
I think it delineates either way and that would be something that.
I ask that because noticing, looking at subsection two, if we grant exceptions, it does put in place some degree of, of protections, if you will, to the welfare of the animal.
Absolutely.
On about not being on a chain, if you're going to be granted an exception for the tethering, um, or a choke chain. Because, you know, my concern is, you know, we require adequate shelter and, and that's great and we, we have to and we should. But that adequate shelter could be a doghouse. If a dog is tethered on some kind of a chain, on a choke chain, a dog could accidentally hang itself, I guess you could say, choke itself to death. And I, that's, you know, a, a concern that I have, um, that I think would be horrific for any homeowner, you know, or, or property, or animal owner to come home to. And I'm sure they wouldn't have think about it, you know, that happening and would want that to happen. But I think that, you know, um, by having, um, you know, choke chains allowed and chains allowed, I mean, you know, animals can get caught. And, yeah, and, um, prong callers that, you know, their animal could be inadvertently injured. And I think that, you know, part of the education process here is, you know, about, um, safe tethering. And, and, uh, like Councilmember Wilson said, if this begins to be something that's a, you know, in a complaint-based enforcement, and if we, because if we put these restrictions in place on tethering, you're going to have a group of people that are going to get exceptions. And I'm confident staff's going to work with them and grant those exceptions, like the example that Councilmember Clark mentioned. Then others that, you know, uh, don't realize maybe what they're doing might be putting their animal in harm's way. Would be an opportunity for Trey and our staff to educate them. And so, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm sensitive to the staff comment here about workload. I, I, I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, you know, um, when they're out in the field, you know, working with, with folks now and it sounds like we are probably identifying a couple dozen of these folks. You know, I don't want it to be a, a burden, a burdensome process to grant these exceptions, uh, either. But I think, you know, you know, something that can be, something can be done through the animal welfare committee and a relatively streamlined, uh, process to grant these exceptions. Can be, can be accommodated. And then that way we can ensure that the folks that are tethering are doing it in a, you know, an educated way and don't have any inadvertent accidents. But also we have in place a stronger ability to intervene if there is potentially cruelty to the animal. Cause I know that it took quite a bit of effort, uh, for the two animals that were taken in by the shelter, uh, folks in order to be able to take those actions. And, you know, there were just growing concerns about the enforcement of cruelty with regard to tethering. And, you know, some of the conversations I recall, having a stronger ordinance seemed to give us, uh, the stronger ability to take action, um, you know, in a more prompt way that could, you know, be more beneficial to the, to the animals that might be at risk.
Councilperson Scott?
Hi. About tethering, so I have always, I've noticed like dogs that are tethered for extended periods of time throughout the day and always been very much against it. I, from a cruelty standpoint, um, don't like it, not one bit. And so I do think that if dogs are going to be tethered, they should absolutely be supervised. I do have, um, there's a really tragic event that happened in my neighborhood a couple of years ago with two beautiful, beautiful dogs. That had to get put down because their owner used to let them just kind of hang out outside. And, you know, from what we understood, they were harmless. I used to run by them with my dogs all the time and never an incident happened. However, one day, um, they attacked another dog and a lady and so, and there was no cause for it, but they should have been supervised. They should have been tethered, um, or just supervised in general, where the owner was there to make sure that that didn't happen. And I do understand the fence jumper argument as well because my dog's a fence jumper. She hasn't jumped the fence since we moved into our new house and she got, she had to stay a night in puppy prison, um, after jumping the fence. She's not done that since. But, um, I do understand the concerns. I just want to make sure that we're not leaving any room for cruelty as well as making sure that there is an education piece to, um, people need to be with their dogs if they're going to be tethered. And maybe the chain thing I think is harsh as well, uh, maybe only a rope. I'm not sure. That's all.
Okay. So the next one, um, is related, it's 403. So the next one, um, is related, it's 403, um, which is related to the confinement of dogs and cats. This is the one where we're going to have to have some direction from you all of what you would like to see. Or of course we can, if legal says, we could present both and let you all determine which one you would like to go forth. But the, um, the ordinances basically say, um, there's two different options. The first one talks about having no cats at large anywhere within the city limits unless they're part of a trap and or return program or a barn cat program. And then option two would be to allow people who, if their cat is at large, then that current, that animal has to be current on vaccinations. They have to have a valid pet license. And they would either, if I remember, I'd have to have a microchip or, uh, a caller on contact with some owner contact information related to them. So really the, even the committee was torn on which way to go with these, but they opted to and requested to send both of them to you all in order to, um, get them presented so that, uh, they can get your input of where they're going. These two are going to stir a significant amount of, um, community discussion, I assure you. You all have probably already seen this and heard this. You saw it when we had the public meeting and several AWAC meetings. Um, the concern from staff on both of fronts is, um, twofold. The issue with, um, primarily starts with capturing them. Um, capturing a stray cat is not like capturing a stray dog. They are extremely agile and very quick and very versatile and go way higher than places than we should. Um, so they're very, very challenging outside of a trapping situation, which creates all kinds of issues depending on how it's being done humanly in those type scenarios. Um, the other concern is related to an increase, uh, of cats into the shelter. The, the return rate of cats is very, very low, um, inside of the shelter. Part of that is a microchipping thing. Some of that is a cultural thing. There are all kinds of different theories out there why that occurs, but most dogs, uh, owners at least will look for them at least to some extent. Um, and cat owners, we don't see that same reply and we do see some and they do go home, but it's not near to the same level as we do with, um, the puppies and the dogs. So one of the other concerns related to option one specifically is, uh, on a trap neuter return program, it's kind of an industry standard that when that procedure is done on the animals, that their ears are, um, clipped. So it's easy to identify them. We've heard some concerns, um, from the public as well of, well, I don't want, I want to allow my animal out and I want to let it free, so I'll just clip its ears on my own, um, which obviously would be extremely unacceptable and illegal. Um, but we know that, that potential exists. We can't outlaw every bit of evil and, and bad things in the world, but that concern has come up. And then, um, we've had discussions with several other cities in the state. And there are many cities who do have this ordinance in place. We've had discussions with many of them and so far, so everybody who, like everyone, right? That says they have it, says they don't enforce it. Um, the only way they enforce it is if the animal's trapped and that was only one or two that actually do anything with it. Um, and they had very similar concerns what we did, which is, um, you can call and tell us that the neighbor's cats over at the house causing problems, uh, but there's no way to catch it. And so there's not much we're ever going to do with it. And we're sure not going to do it proactively. There's not going to be the, the roving SWAT cops at night looking for, for cats, the, the cat cops or whatever we're calling them. So those, those fears and concerns of how was it even enforceable? And if it isn't enforceable, why do we have an ordinance related to it and those type of concerns? So those are some, some things and some considerations that have come up. Um, I don't know how you all go about or refer to go about giving us some direction on what you would want to see, or if you want to see both or where, where we're at. I know you all are getting a lot of feedback from the community too. So we just need your help on knowing what you would like to see forward.
Any counsel guidance? Councilmember Clark.
I've gotten a whole lot of emails on this one. Uh, I think we all have. And as that stands, I think option number two would be better. At least making sure they're vaccinated and has a valid issued pet license, which I think would help with the wandering cats. Um, based on the feedback I'm getting from my residents, which like I said, they've gotten a whole lot of emails on this one. I had no idea we were this passionate about cats in Norman. Um, so I would support option number two.
Councilperson Wilson.
Um, I have gotten a lot of feedback on this as well. And being in the animal industry, I get it from all over. Um, a lot of, uh, very valid concerns from shelter professionals and from, um, veterinarians and a lot of rescue folks have contacted me. So taking all of that into consideration and the fact that we don't have a, a low-cost spare neuter program in our, our city and some things like that that are going on. I think option two would be the good, uh, compromise. I'm sorry, I would prefer option one because I have some people in Ward five, surprisingly, that are very passionate about this in it, that they wished all cats were because of a lot, there's a lot of chickens getting eaten and things like that that happen and bird and fowl that are having, people don't feel like they should have to put up with other people's cats. So I get that part two, but I think the compromise with the resources we have at this point, option number two is going to be my, my.
Councilperson Brim.
So I guess, I guess one of my questions is if, if option one is not enforceable, what makes option two more enforceable? If we're not catching cats, how are we going to enforce the vaccinations or the spay and neutering or the microchip? It seems to me that if option one is unenforceable, then option two is unenforceable as well. And it simply makes us feel better, like we're still doing something. So.
To a large extent, you're, you're accurate. We can't capture them. If they were in, um, our custody for some reason, they were captured by a neighbor, they were caught in a trap trying to catch a possum, those type of scenarios. Um, then that's where those, those potential, um, concerns would come in. It mirrors our current language to a large extent, with the exception of those couple additions. Um, so that would be a valid, um, point to it. What it does is add in that educational component to, hey, if it's going to be at large, there's that expectation that it's also going to be vaccinated. It's also going to have those abilities to get it home if we do find it, especially when it's injured or anything of that nature. Cause unfortunately right now, we, we just don't see a lot of that. Um, but there's not, there's still no effort or methodology to go out there and capture them all and verify their microchipped and tagged or whatever the case is. There's no way to do that proactively. It would be, it would be a, an issue when they come into the shelter or are brought in.
Which again, because so few are actually returned, it seems to me that that's going to be an issue no matter what. And if we're talking about mirroring ordinances, I feel like if we're going that route, the way to mirror the ordinance is to treat cats the same way that we treat dogs or any other animal, which is we don't let them run loose. Um, but I also, but I also had a question, um, and I maybe should have asked this a little bit earlier when, when we had both of these kind of in the same section. But can you, can you explain the difference between TNR and return to field? Um, and why, maybe there's someone else who needs to do that? Um, and why we are exempting TNR in this section while, but while we also have return to field in a different section and why we're not putting both in here just so that people understand the difference? Cause I'm not even entirely sure that I do.
I'm not sure I do either, but I'll take a shot at the risk of anything thrown at me. Um, so the, the barn cat program is, is more self-explanatory. Animals that come in, feral cats that come in and are, are in the shelter and are unsafe for going into homes, um, based on their demeanor, uh, their demeanor, are released into what we have a barn cat program. We work with a local organization who works with, uh, rural owners of, of usually barns. And they need them in there to help control the rodent populations and things. So they are spayed, neutered, um, and put back into those environments at a voluntary basis to allow them to, to do what they do. I mean, to live out their life in that environment, whereas they wouldn't be eligible for adoption uh, because of their, their, their temper and danger to somebody in a normal, um, apartment dwelling or something of that nature potentially. Um, the trap neuter return program is an active program that when a, 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 they, an active colony is located of cats and, and there's this, this group of them. There are theories and, and studies that will tell you that if you go in and remove the cats, that other cats will move in and take over that, especially if you catch the alpha male and you take it out, the new one will come in and will re-breed all the females and exponentially increase your population growth. So what happens is the animals are removed from that colony. They are spayed, neutered, vaccinated, three years or tipped to identify them as part of that group so that they're captured again, they can be released and not re, um, go through that process. And then they are left in that, in that community or that colony. And then through time and through attrition and through normal means of their lifestyle, that the colonies will shrink significantly. And there are, um, organizations in the city who do that. We partner with them, um, to the extent to that. And when we have these calls of people calling and saying, hey, I have this, uh, business I just bought and I have 40 cats running around and, and in the alley and I can't control them or some scenario similar to that, that we, we refer to them to those, um, those organizations and they work with it. The return to field, as I understand it, is a little bit different. Is that is if we captured the animal for some reason and brought it in or it was brought to us as a single stray and not part of those colonies, um, in those active TNR groups, that it would go through the same process and be returned back to that area.
Okay.
Am I close?
Is that?
Are getting things thrown at me?
Kind of.
Sure, there's some little
Bouncing back and forth between Trey and Dr. Tyler to kind of see if I'm getting anywhere close to that. Okay, um, so I guess part of my concern is if we're not really going to be able to even enforce option two, what then actually helps us reduce our feral or community cat population? If we have a bunch of owned cats that are allowed to free roam? How do we then reduce those populations if we can't actually enforce spaying and neutering or vaccinations on these cats?
I think most of it comes into some of the efforts that are already going on now. Um, the education and the require, or the request to have them spayed, neutered and taken care of and not release them. And we have a low cost vaccination or not vaccination, um, spay and neutering program that the city actually grants. Um, we don't run it, but we partner with the, uh, organization who does. Um, we give them a significant amount of money every year that, so people can hopefully get their own pets and their animals into these. Um, so most of it comes down to an education standpoint and a proactive help from the city's standpoint of funding those programs. Um, and even potentially someday, I know there's been some talks in the past of looking at running our own low-cost spay and neuter stuff and, and those type components are really what are required to take care of that. From a solution standpoint, you're talking a, a very long time, of course.
Right. So, I mean, I'm certainly, I'm certainly in favor of low-cost spay and neuter. I would love to see our program grow. Uh, Dr. Carter and I have requested additional funds for that spay and neuter program in the next year's budget. But I guess, I guess what I'm trying to circle around is that if we're really looking at this as more of an educational ordinance, not something that can really be directly enforced because we're not going to be going and, and able to round up cats to check their spay and neuter, to check their vaccinations or to make sure that they are either tagged or microchipped, why not educate them through asking them to keep their cats indoors? You see what I'm saying is that while I see the education component of option two, even the American Veterinary Medicine Association encourages pet owners to keep their cats inside for a variety of reasons. But if this is really not going to be enforceable because we're not going to be able to round up the cat to check to make sure that they're following all of these requests that we're making of them, why not educate them through an educational ordinance that requests that they keep them inside for the very many reasons that indoor cats live longer and have less of an impact on the neighborhood and the environment by not being outside? So just kind of, just trying to, to see if we're not really going to be enforcing option two and we're not going to be enforcing option one, why not go the stronger route and encourage people to keep their cats inside?
Uh, I think from an education standpoint, from a proclamation or whatever the case, from you all or from us, I don't think there's any concern with that. The option, if I, and I may misunderstand you, if we pass, if you all were to adopt option one and it were to put into law, but we weren't to pass it, that would concern me from an expectation standpoint of the public's out there saying, well, this law is in place and now your guys aren't enforcing it. I mean, I can guarantee you, we will get a lot of calls and people calling, go, well, this cat's here, take care of it. And, and expect us and have that, that, that expectation that we're going to come out and solve that problem. And it just simply isn't possible. Um, and so I would ask that we don't, that we don't, uh, put us in a position where we're told, hey, this is the law, but we know you can't do it, so don't worry about it. Um, because that causes, um, both from the law enforcement standpoint, especially in welfare side, a significant concern. But I don't, if I'm understanding your other side correctly, to, to say, hey, neither of these two, pass them to try to push some education and definitely focus on that. I think that's a reasonable effort and I know that occurs in some extent. It needs to be focused on more. I absolutely agree, um, especially as we get in that. But there are several organizations who do that and we do our best to work with them. But sometimes obviously we fall short.
Right. I mean, cause I can see the same issue with option two. I mean, I, I've got a porch cat that I feed on a regular basis. I'm actually a little worried about him because I haven't seen him in a few days and it's been really, really cold. I know for a fact that he's not neutered. It is very, very plain to see. If we pass option two, we still might run into the issue where, I, I mean, I can call you then. I can call and say, I know that this cat isn't neutered, come and get him. But that doesn't mean that you're going to be able to do that. So while I see the issue with option one, I see a similar issue happening with option two because someone's going to want to be sure that if there's a cat roaming around their neighborhood, they're going to want to be sure that that cat is spayed or neutered and has its vaccinations. And the only way to actually prove that is for the cat to somehow make its way to the shelter so that the shelter can address that. So I do see, I do see enforcement issues with both options, which again, just makes me wonder why then go with the option that is, is also just as unenforceable.
Understood. And the only thing I can add to that is, and your, your scenario is right. Um, if you knew though that that cat was your neighbor's cat and so you weren't feeding it and if it were just showing up on your property, and I have a neighbor that has a cat that runs across my yard all the time, doesn't cause problems, moves on her way and does her thing. If you knew that a cat weren't spayed, neutered, vaccinated, were having those issues and you were able to identify who that owner is, we have some ability then to go down that path without catching it potentially. Um, so we would have some limited, again, complaint-driven enforcement, um, of that. So we give us at least a partial step, but you're still right. We wouldn't be going out capturing every animal to verify that. I mean, that just isn't feasible.
Right. Thank you.
Councilperson Scott.
I forgot my question. Um, it's okay. So I, um, want to, I guess, go back to number two, um, option two. I'm wondering, um, if we offer any sort of free vaccination day or multiple days a year, like quarterly or a couple of months, um, free vaccinations, free spay and neuter in the city?
We do not do vaccination clinics. Um, we do advertise local groups who do them, um, but from a, a cost standpoint and a, um, a funding standpoint, as well as a, an equity standpoint of, you know, what is the city funding versus people who are getting their own vaccinations? It also, my understanding from talking to some of our vets, um, is that there's some concerns about, um, logistics behind doing those. Cause as, as they do those vaccinations are required, at least impart by law to do examinations on them. And so there's a plethora of logistical things. We don't do the spay or we don't do vaccinations. Um, as far as a low-cost spay and neuter, we do work, we do work with a, um, an organization, actually a couple of them, but one in particular in town, um, who does the legwork for us. Um, they're actually, they work throughout the metro, um, but they, they partner with us. They do the legwork, they do the advertising, they do the work and we fund them. And what they do is they go out and gather information from people and they target their, their advertising to, um, parts of the city where they're seeing a high rate of, of strays and some potential for that work. What they do is they go in and say, if you meet certain criteria to be classified as, as a, uh, needing assistance in that, then they will either pay for all or part of that procedure to have those animals in. Um, I believe that number is $20,000 a year that is funded to them. Um, it goes by fairly, most of the time we go through it. And there's a couple of occasions, you know, where we don't every once in a while, usually we run out early. Um, so, uh, we do do what we can on that front, but it, the, from a shelter standpoint, we don't have anywhere near the resources to take that on by ourself. Um, so we do, we do struggle with that to an extent.
But there are partnerships that, uh, or you guys do, or we do partnerships.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. And there are, there are several, um, organizations and not even just in Norman, but sometimes even in the metro or south of home city more who do those. And we share that information when we can. And we obviously, if somebody comes to us and says, hey, I'm unable to afford my vaccinations for animal, we'll obviously try to get them in contact with those, with those folks who do those fairly regularly.
Cool. I have a follow-up. Um, what is the penalty then, I guess, if we find the cat and then it's still, it, you know, what, what happens to that person's cat and then?
Thought you were talking a court thing, like a charge. Um, uh, so if an animal comes into the shelter and the animal can go back home, then obviously that's our intent. And so if it's not, then it would be moved out for adoption.
But it has to do the, the seven day hold, correct?
It does.
So most people I feel like who have outside cats, they like just let their cats go and then the cats sort of do their own thing.
Right.
And then they come home. And then if they don't come home, then somebody might be concerned after a couple of days.
Right. Um, But the, if it came into the shelter and we weren't able to identify it through a microchip or a tattoo or something of that nature, then we would absolutely, uh, we would hold it for that straight period. And you're right, they usually will show up and looking for them after day two, three, um, after weather like this or something. Um, but after day one, they usually don't come looking for the animal. But it's held for that straight hold to make sure they have a chance to come, uh, look through the kid, uh, the kitties and try to find theirs.
Is there something in here that reduces the hold time?
So, um, one of the first ones we talked about was to reduce the official hold time from five days to three days for known, right now it's five and seven, um, split. However, when we add in those delineations of what a day is and is today, day one, or is tomorrow day one? And the, the weekends when they're closed on Sunday and holidays and things, it very rare, it only affects two days of the week. It lowers it one day. But that, but I can tell you from a procedural standpoint and from a logistical standpoint, when day five or day five or day seven shows up for that animal, it's very, very rare that animal is going to be processed and moved out on day six or day eight. Um, there's almost always a backlog and they're going to be there, um, sometimes, um, a few more days before that occurs. And even if they are processed immediately and moved through, um, let's say they're already spayed, they're already neutered, they're vaccinated, they're microchipped, they're moved over to adoption, then they're still in the facility for a few days. they're moved over to adoption, then they're still in the facility for a few days. And we've had people show up and look for their animals and it's an adoption, of course, we give it back to them.
Okay. Do you think this will increase the abundance of animals we already have in the shelter?
Dramatically, I think it would cause some significant increases. And that's one of the big concerns from the shelter standpoint is the number of cats that we can house and the duration of those. And given that expectation, a lot of people have private traps. And when they are out there capturing the animals and bringing them to us, then we have an obligation to hold on to them. And the concern comes into a what point are we able to house them and get them adopted into other programs? And are we overwhelmed and burdened for many, many years, way preceding me? We've had significant push on trying to turn those tides and to get the animals out and increase our live release rate and things. And I, our fear would be that this would contradict some of those or counteract that potentially.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for a quick clarification, that's for option one.
For option one, absolutely, option two shouldn't change much of anything. If anything, option two would hopefully help us with that by requiring those microchipping or tagging and vaccinating so we could get them back. We do get cats that occasionally come in with a microchip. And then we can call the owner immediately and say, hey, it's here, come get it. And of course, they usually do.
And Councilmember Hickman, a question?
Yeah, my question really has to do with the conversation I'm going to go about return to field. So if I understand correctly what was described, if an animal is a stray cat, not a feral cat, but a stray cat brought into the shelter and is then spayed and neutered, whatever, that the decision could be made to return it to the field, I guess, put it back out into the community somewhere. And in my understanding, that generally correct?
Can Dr. Tyler answer that for you?
Sure. You, you, ma'am, Doctor, can you please come over?
Sorry, Dr. Tyler, for those of you who don't know her, was our vet for many years at the shelter, has left us in the last, I don't know, few months. But, but she can probably answer that much better than I can.
Just for clarification, this is a study session. It's an open meeting, but it's not a public meeting.
Right.
And so I'm going to allow you, because you have been on the shelter chef and so you're still kind of staff and you've got some clarification on this, but this is not going to be a free fall for everybody to come talk.
So the return to field program, yes, that if they are healthy and they're not deemed a nuisance, they can potentially be returned back to the location where they were found. So that there's kind of different ways to run the return to field programs. So it is possible that highly adoptable animals, if they're kittens, if they're young and very social, that they would still go into the adoption program and leave that way. But it would give the opportunity for these animals to go back to the communities that they came from. And it actually addresses a concern that you had. If just a sliver, and actually in 2018, our return to owner rate for cats was 5.6%. So if only 5.6% of these owners are learning that their cat went to the shelter and was, that's where it ended up, you, you can't really pass ordinances and expect to teach people that they need to keep their cats up. So the other thing is, is just like this cat you described, there's a lot of cats that are fed by multiple people. And when they're gone for two days, people don't go look for them because they kind of assume that it's somebody else's responsibility. So that's an opportunity for that cat to come in, be neutered and come back to the community where it's being fed when we know that it's healthy and that it isn't, you know, potentially going to spread contagious diseases to other cats. So this is a program that's been started in a variety of different communities, including Oklahoma City, that could serve as both a mentor and a model for us to start the same kind of program. They've been proven to be very successful. One of the, the cities that started this program was Gainesville, Florida, or I'm sorry, Jacksonville, Florida. And over the course of eight years, they've decreased their intake by almost 50%. So there, there's been significant success with these type of programs before. And I think that, you know, generally cat enthusiasts and bird enthusiasts all want the same thing. They want fewer cats. So this appears to be a way to do it, but it requires that you not have an ordinance that, that bans free roaming cats to be able to allow these cats to return to field.
I was closer than I thought.
So does our ordinance, does our ordinance currently allow the return of the field program?
No, sure.
That, is that in this proposed language to be changed?
That's in one of the ones earlier we were talking about.
Okay, I guess I missed that.
When originally.
One or two?
Somebody's going to know faster than I am, I think it was option one or tier one, I believe.
Okay, so it was a different. It was a different section?
It was, yes, it's not in this section either, actually it may have been in tier two. Tier one on page four. Hearing voices in my head. Yes, number eight. And that's that ability to open that program again, not, there's not an active program in there or in going on in the shelter and that would allow the staff as they get the opportunity and that the community support. Obviously, some of that comes with some significant educational components too. Because I can guarantee you, we will get a plethora of call and you all will get more of them when an animal welfare officer in uniform shows up releasing a cat into a neighborhood. So there's some big time educational components there that would come to that.
Yeah, I guess that was kind of, and I missed that, I guess, when we were in the tier one conversation, that's kind of just a, I have constituents on both sides of these issues and I'm just cautious to be releasing cats, you know, and it's unclear to me if that could potentially be increasing in the cat population, for lack of a better expression. And it just makes me wonder if we're not going to maybe be telling people, it's kind of like I tell people now, hey, if somebody breaks into your house, report it. It's important that we put that data on the map so that people, you know, so the, the resources of our police department are going to know that there's been a bicycle stolen. You may not, you may tell me, councilman, I'll never get my bike back, it's a waste of my time, et cetera, et cetera. And I always tell people, but if you don't report it, you know, you might help your neighbor and it helps with our resources. What I fear is you're potentially creating more workload for yourself and the staff. Because now I feel like I'm going to be put in a position to tell people, if you have a cat that you think is a nuisance in your neighborhood, you better report it, even if it's not caught, even if you don't know anything about the cat. Because if you don't report, this area has a nuisance cat, then you could have a cat brought back and put into your neighborhood. And, you know, because the staff won't know that you have a quote unquote nuisance cat. And, and I suspect that oftentimes you're not, there's not a report made to the shelter that we have a cat in our area that is a nuisance. You, maybe you can't catch it, maybe you don't know anything about it. A lot of people probably don't even call right now because they're, they realize or they think that nothing can be done. But I'm just telling you from sitting on this side of the seat, when I've had to tell people and over and over and over again to report it, report it, report it, the importance of that data to get resources allocated. Now I feel like I'm going to be having to tell people, if you have a cat problem that you think is a nuisance, even if that can't, cat can't be caught, even if you think nothing can be done, you better report it. Otherwise, there could be a cat released back to field into your neighborhood. And I'm just wondering if we're not, I understand the, the concept. I'm just concerned in, in our community that we're maybe not creating a, a, a problem that we don't, more workload for you guys and a problem that maybe we, an unintended consequence, maybe what I'm getting at. And I mean, and I understand this, the current debate about, you know, option one and option two on the confinement of, of cats. So this is kind of related to that because it seems to me that if we're considering limiting cats that we're going to allow to be at large with option two restrictions, but then we're going to turn around and release cats back to the field that were strays, those seem to be inconsistent positions. And potentially compounding the nuisance problem that we, that I hear about in, in some instances, and I think others have as well, being that we don't, people that are good pet owners, you know, we're trying to find a balance here of allowing their cats to still be able to go outside. You know, but at the same time, I'm just concerned about releasing cats back into the field that could be compounding a problem, whether it's to do with birds and wildlife or with just nuisance that, that, that cats, you know, are to some people, I'll put it that way. You know, and that reminds me of kind of Councilmember Clark's comment about trees. I mean, there are some people that are allergic to cats, you know, and if you have, you know, cats and, yeah, cats, you know, roaming your neighborhood and you have a child, you know, that's allergic to them, you know, you know, there are health considerations, I think, that, you know, in some instances could come into play as well. And anyway, I'm just, I, I want to further think about, I didn't catch it when you brought that up before about the releasing the cats. I understand Dr. Tyler's comments and I appreciate that and her expertise. I'm just also wondering about that in conjunction with this discussion now about confinement of cats, trying to find a, a fair balance.
Okay, your concerns are noted. Councilmember Beerman.
So kind of along those same lines, but also in relation to confinement of cats generally. I guess my concern, my concern with this is that as, as every single council member here received the email with the video of seven cats hanging out in this Norman residence's front lawn. He said he has trapped 20 plus cats in the years that he's lived at that house since 2008. He's brought them to Norman Animal Welfare and he's reported where the cats are living and still nothing is being done. Nuisance or TNR cat or owned free roaming cats, it doesn't really matter to him in particular, where these cats are coming from. The fact remains that on any given night, he might have six to seven cats sitting in his front yard. And the, I mean, the video he attached to the email shows that very plainly. He said he can't keep the cat poop out of his flower beds because it continues to be a persistent issue for him. And so my concern with option number two is that doesn't solve his problem. That doesn't solve the fact that a neighbor clearly has a significant number of cats or simply feeding a significant number of cats. And it doesn't matter how many he traps, they keep, they keep coming back, they keep repopulating. And my concern is that if option number two is unenforceable because we're not going to be rounding these cats up and checking their private areas to see if we spayed or neutered them, this is going to continue to be a problem. So I simply want to make sure that whatever we do, that we're not just addressing the convenience of someone being able to let their cat outside, but the significant inconvenience that Norman residents are experiencing, whether it's chickens and quail disappearing in Ward Five or a cat party on someone's front porch in Core Norman. This have, this is, this is, these are, these are problems that are popping up across the city. And unfortunately, it seems like what we have right now isn't addressing those problems and some of the solutions presented also don't address those problems. So, you know, to me, that's, that's the big concern. I mean, it's, and by the way, the cat that had been missing for two nights came back to my front porch this afternoon. My front cam, my front porch camera just caught him. So thankfully, he's alive because that's one of my concerns when these cats disappear is that I don't want anything bad to happen to them. But at the same time, he's not pooping in my garden bed yet. And when he does, that's probably when the food's going to be removed. So, but to these, but to these issues, I mean, trapping 20 plus cats since 2008, bringing them to Norman Animal Welfare and still nothing can be done about the fact that last night or Sunday night, I guess it was, he had seven cats just hanging out on his front porch. So that's my concern with, with option two. I mean, frankly, it's a concern with option one because as you said, it's not, it's not super enforceable. But at the same time, we have, we have a problem that seems to keep cropping up and we need solutions for it. So whether it's one of these two options or something else that, that this council comes up with, we do, we do have a problem and it seems like what we have on the books right now isn't addressing it.
Councilmember Clark.
I guess my thought to that would be with option number two, if it's an owned pet, they would have to have a license, they would at least know who to get it back to, so they wouldn't have to take it back to the shelter. And then if it's not an owned pet, just a bunch of feral cats, I don't know how this would help that either. They're still going to reproduce. And so I'm not a fan of creating ordinances we can't enforce. And this is clearly a problem that there's no perfect answer for. But I'm still going to support option two because at least it will have the license or chip on that you could return it without having to take it back to, or take it to the shelter. And the feral cat issue won't be necessarily addressed because they're, they're not, that's the problem. So I don't know, and I had actually a question for Councilor Beerman because we talked about this and I couldn't find it in my email. What do other cities do with this issue?
Am I on? Okay. So it mean, it honestly, I think as, as Captain Barber addressed, there's, there is a significant issue in how to enforce these ordinances. But the majority of other cities from, in the research I found, Oklahoma City was the only other city that didn't exclude, that excluded cats from their at large ordinance. And so when I, when I called, the first city that I found was Jenks. And I called, I called the city of Jenks and I talked to them and, and they were just flabbergasted that we excluded cats. They were like this, but all animals, if an animal is owned, we don't let it just run around. Whether it's a 15 pound cocker spaniel or a 20 pound cat or a horse or a goat or a chicken, we don't let animals roam our city. And so, you know, while a lot of that will be kind of education, but if something is on the books, most people are law abiding. They want to be law abiding. And so I would like to think that if we put this on the books, the majority of people will either figure out how to keep their cat indoors or in the circumstance that they don't. I mean, my cats, my cats sit out in the yard, my cats are supervised tethered in my yard. They wear little jackets and I put leashes on them, mostly because I'm worried that something's going to happen to them. I really don't think they have any intent of leaving my yard, they just want to sit on the concrete and chew some grass. But they will scratch at the door. So I put their little jackets on them, I clip the leashes on them and we go outside and we sit there for 20 minutes and I bring them back inside. But we are an outlier in this way. Norman and Oklahoma City are outliers. The majority of cities in, in Oklahoma, I could literally only find us two that didn't include cats in their at large ordinance. It's just, as the, as the woman at Jenks said, this is just what you do in a civilized society. You just don't let your animals just roam around. So, you know, and I would like to think, I would like to think that my cats would keep their collars on if they were running out with their, with their tags on. I will not guarantee that because I have lost eight collars in my house and I don't know where they are, I just can't find them. So particularly with cats, the microchip is going to be the only foolproof way of ensuring ownership, but that does require someone to trap the cat and then bring it somewhere to get scanned for a chip. So I would certainly not consider a pet license to be foolproof because most people who let their cats outside also put the breakaway collars on them. So if they get tangled in something, the collar will, will snap open and the cat then is not trapped wherever it was trapped because the collar got caught. So, you know, I don't, I don't think there's any perfect solution for it. And frankly, I don't think that there's going to be any single solution. I think that this is going to have to be a combined effort. And that's why I do have some, I do have some concerns about, about both of, both of these. But I have heard a lot of, a lot of feedback on both sides from people who you feel like they can't keep their cat inside. And then people who are feeling like their home, that they don't want to walk up to their front porch because it smells like ammonia, or someone who feels like they can't put their car in the, they can't leave their car in the, in the driveway because they're going to end up with paw prints and cat scratches all over it. So we do, we do have a problem with convenience on one hand and inconvenience on the other. And I don't know that there's any perfect solution, but I do know that we are an outlier in this. And so I think this is a discussion worth having and I honestly don't really know. I know personally, personally, I like option one, but in terms of how I will vote for Ward one, I'm still not, I'm still not entirely sure because I see benefits and, and concerns with, with both options.
Okay. We move on to the next item. Any questions on this one? Got a little bit more to cover, time standpoint, let's.
Can I ask you, Councilmember Beerman, if you will pass that information on from the video cat party porch people? You'll pass that either through the Oversight Committee or through the city manager to us? Because I just asked Trey and he's not familiar and we have ordinances that should prohibit that already with numbers of it, if it's all one house. So just make sure they're aware. And the next one in the, the list is the, the use of animals at carnivals, festivals and similar events. This is a brand new ordinance and it doesn't exist in our current ordinances in any way. So there's kind of multiple components. The first part would basically prohibit, you see the list of, of types of animals, but prohibit, prohibit them on city owned property at any festival, carnival, function or event as part of an attraction or ride or something of that nature. Not touching into parades and some of the other events that do occur within the city. Mascots, of course, local school mascots, universities, Boomer, Shunar, all those are exempted in section two. And then number three relates to private owned property. This has been a, a, this is our, when it's similar to the others, has been very hard to craft and try to meet everybody's expectations while protecting their, their rights as well. So on number three and four relates to private owned property events. If they were having those events, it would basically require a permit to be received by the city, swimming through the city clerk's office. And then that would open the door to some sort of, of potential for evaluation and make sure they're, they're performing that in a safe manner. Not a common concern, we have most of the folks that are doing these events, they use these animals for their livelihood and we have very, very few concerns or places that we, they show up. Most of those can be addressed through cruelty ordinances, but I know there's some concerns on both sides of that too. So that is number 502.
All right.
Okay.
No questions?
Moving on to the last one, this one, I think, and I have to clarify this, this is not a prohibition of large reptiles and snakes. is not a prohibition of large reptiles and snakes. Some people think this is the, the prohibition of snake things, and while I'm not a snake guy by any means, I, I, this is not what this is. Basically, all it is, is if you have an animal that ha, which is a snake, lizard, large reptile, or tortoise, that is capable in its adult stage of reaching over 40 pounds, so the big, big critters, if they are around and you have them, then there's an expectation just to register, or just make us aware that you have them at your house. It's simply a public safety need. There's no licensing inspections, it's not even to the level of the dogs and cats. We have some residents in the city who we have become aware of, usually through good terms, but occasionally through some, some bad circumstances, where they will have a significant portion of very large animals in their house. It becomes a, a public safety concern, not only for, for the, the guys and gals that work with me, and for me, of responding to their house, especially it'd be in the middle of the night with a fire, or something of the nature. But if there's a windstorm or tornado that comes through, and that house is leveled, and now they're loose, of knowing that they're there, and we need to look for them potentially. So it's simply just a, a log, similar to what we request people do currently for large animals, again, so that when they're out, we can get their cows back to the right pasture, because they've wandered off, or horses. So not a prohibition. I know it's been a concern from some people, that's not what this is.
So it's just a notification that you have them?
Just.
Is there a, is there any situation where you would take the animal away, or prohibit them from having them?
Not unless we had some sort of neglect, abuse, cruelty, failure to care for it scenario. This is just simply to make sure it's aware, and that we can add it in, to know, in case we have a response, there were some emergency. The, the fear and the concern in some of these animals, they're not as obvious as dogs or cats. So the example I use, is we have a, a car collision, and somebody dies in a crash, we go to their residence to maybe make notification, and we usually tell if there's a dog or a cat there, because they're going to come to the door, and we know we may have to make entry to that house, to ensure that those animals are safe, if we can't find next of kin. On these, we may have no idea they're in there. Now, while they may, you know, survive a month or two without eating, they may not. And if they get out, nobody knows they're there, or a tornado scenario. So it's just simply making sure we know they're there.
And I understand this list is kept confidential.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I believe that even within it, it is in the ordinance in particular, it says it's not going to be a public review, it's exempt from public release, and those type things. It's just simply for our purposes, to make sure that we're being safe, and that we're taking care of the best thing we can.
Okay.
And only on the really big ones.
Councilmember Beerman.
I would imagine that this would also come into play in the event of a natural disaster, let's say. I would certainly like to imagine that you'd make a house with a bunch of pythons and anacondas a priority in a situation like that.
Absolutely. I mean, obviously, the human life safety stuff will come about that from an animal welfare standpoint, if that house is no longer there, especially when it's in a neighborhood or around other kids or parks. We have one in particular that's fairly close to a large creek in town, that would be a significant concern, when those snakes are potentially roaming. But yes, that would absolutely qualify.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I will sleep better at night knowing that.
Councilmember Clark.
So that's the end of your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Just in summary, I just wanted to go over the ones, you know, for guidance, I guess that's what this study session's about. My personal opinion about the owner relinquishment, section 3206, is that I would not be in favor of those changes right now. I think that it would encourage a release into the environment of animals, and we just need to staff it in a way that allows us to accept relinquishments on the schedules of the clients, you know? The cruelty to animals, section 301, reporting, I would agree with both of those. My tethering story would be that, as a young veterinarian, I was dramatically driven to think that tethering was very inhumane by the death of an animal that I had to attend to that hung himself with just a regular collar. And I just don't, I, I, I am for the tethering ordinance. I agree with Councilmember Beerman, there's no perfect solution with the cat. I do feel like that if there were no laws on the books about animals at large, and we started from scratch, it'd be easy to include no cats and dogs, and blah, blah, blah. But the fact that, you know, we don't, you've got this longstanding history, makes it very unpalatable with a lot of people. And I would be for option two. I, I do not agree with the festival carnival section. I can see it as a way to, I mean, we're, you know, we've got the Roundup Club on the east side of town having a rodeo, we want to have a parade this May down Main Street with horses. Well, there'll be people on ponies, you know? And so I'm not in favor of that section. And then I guess I would be in favor of the large animal notification of large reptiles. So, but good work, I appreciate all the hard work. I know, I mean, I, I don't know, there's Mark Howery in there, I mean, I think I was on the Animal Welfare Committee for 11 years, and went through revisions of these ordinances several times, and I know it's painstaking, and very controversial. People are very passionate about their animals in this city, and really appreciate your work, and your staff's work, and the police department's work, in doing what they're doing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hickman.
Going back to the top of page four, that animal release deal, what would be staff's thoughts about adding into that section, if we were to go down this road of having this kind of a program that we provide, I'll say notice, and, and I, the only example that comes to mind is kind of what we do for like a rezoning, we give notice of, you know, within a certain area, I think it's 300 or 350 feet, maybe that's too much, I don't know, but that we give notice, okay, we're going to, we're going to bring this cat, we're going to bring a cat out, and we're going to drop it off here, and we're going, but before we do that, we're going to give notice to a certain area, that that's our intention, and a reasonable period of time for people to, you know, object, or not object. And if you get objections, then we don't do it. I understand the purpose of the idea, and so I'm trying to create some flexibility here, that, and, and work on that concept, but I'm trying to, at the same time, avoid a situation where people are having to now proactively start saying, there's a nuisance cat here, to kind of create a shield around, you know, cats being returned to the field. So the idea is maybe an easier middle ground, if you will, is that we provide, you know, some, some notice within a, you know, I don't know what area would be, you know, I say 300 or 350 feet, because I think that's our current notice requirement at the city, but that we give, you know, notice, whatever, two weeks in advance, and then people have a, a period of time to, to call in and, and say, no, 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 that, that cat's a nuisance, or make some kind of an objection. If they, if they don't, then great. And then we can begin to roll this program out. If they, if they do, then we look someplace else, or we adopt the cat out. Thoughts? I don't know what the councillors think about that, or what staff thinks.
So since that's not my direct team anymore, for what, if you're okay with it, what I'll do is I'll make sure and sit down with them, and we'll discuss something on that. I don't think it's unreasonable. I, I hear what you're saying, there's some balance in there, as well as private property, obviously, where they can redo, release, and those type things, so.
And I, and I'm, I'm really just trying to avoid situations like, like I do now with the bicycle example, having to tell people, you better report this, or the cat could be returned to field in your neighborhood, if you think you have a nuisance cat. But rather, whereas now it's, we're providing a notice, and people have a chance to respond. If they don't respond, then great, we can begin to adopt this program and, and return cats, you know, because I think there's some value to that. But it stands by, I don't want to have this unintended consequence.
Understood. I, we'll take that back, and we'll discuss that. I don't.
All right. If that's all the comments, appreciate it. Appreciate staff's hard work on this, and I guess that's, sorry.
Can, from a procedural standpoint, is it the four that we've talked about, that I think are more concerning, and or need more work? As far as bringing them forward to you all as recommendations, would it be best to bring the ones that everybody's very clear and good and happy with as one, and then separate those three or four?
That was my, that was going to be my next question to council. How would you guys, if we're done with comments, how would you like to proceed? Do you want to staff work on some more? You want to bring it forward? You want another study session? Please, no. You have another public meeting, or what's, what's your thoughts, or the, the ones? It dies in committee if we don't move it forward?
We should move it forward.
Okay.
And get the council office. Amendments.
Councilmember Hickman.
Alex Wong.
I guess I just want a little bit more clarity on like which options we're moving forward with on the cat ones, and then as well as just like a little more clarity and specificity, specificity, on the, like the tethering and stuff, just a little bit more there. And then also, anything about, I know that the city can't really offer the free vaccinations and things of that nature, but just kind of maybe in there, like a list of places where people can go, just so that it's available to people to look at.
Yep. And to that particular, we do put that on our social media from time to time, anybody that shows up at the shelter, we actually have a list of those places.
Okay, great.
They'd absolutely help provide, be able to provide. The four that, that I have on my notes are the tethering, the cats at large, the, the TNR returned to field one, and then the owner relinquishment, one of the four that it looks like we're kind of, I'm still trying to get some information on.
Oh.
Is that kind of council's idea, maybe separate those out, to be both on individually, and, or?
I would like to, individually. And then also, I do support the lowering the timeframe, the, whatever it's called.
Sure, the whole time.
The whole time, thank you.
To get them out.
Councilmember Clark.
I think the one thing that I would, I've already said I would support option two with the tethering, I would just want to make sure before we move that forward, that we have the clear policy and process on how to request an exemption.
Certainly.
I wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward without that, because I know some people would need it immediately.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. From enactment, we'd have to have it very quickly. And then on the, on the cats at large, we can, I know I'm probably going to get scalded at, but we could bring both of those, and let you all look at them, or do you all make it? I don't know how that procedurally works. I don't want to overwhelm your agenda with a whole bunch of votes, but.
I think we could proceed with, it sounded like enough in favor of option two, but we could prepare amendments for option one, if you all wanted to present those. That might be cleaner than trying to break the ordinance up into different sections to vote on.
Councilmember Beerman.
I support the tethering ordinance as written. I think one way to address Councilmember Clark's concern, and I think we should do this regardless of whether or not we have the policy ready when we vote, but I would like to see a minimum of a six-month lead-in time, give people time to educate themselves on it, and possibly even generate their own solutions prior to needing an exemption. I think that also would give staff time to work on, to work on the actual policy, so the day it goes into effect, the policy would be in place.
I think we have a built-in rule that anything that's passed, unless it's an emergent thing, already has a three-month delay.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
So I could see it being built in, you know, maybe it goes into effect November 1, or something along those lines. I, I'm also, I'm also perfectly fine with animals as entertainment policy, the way it's written. I, if it, it seems like there's enough support on council for option two for the cats at large, so, you know, if that seems to be, seems to be the consensus, I'm fine with moving that one forward. I do agree with Councilmember Hickman, that I, I do have some concerns about the owner relinquishment language. But otherwise, I, I feel like, I feel like we've made some enough progress on the majority of these, that unless, unless staff feels like they need more time to work on something like that, no, don't want more time.
No, ma'am.
That, you know, if we just want to bring up the owner relinquishment language as written, and we can, you know, maybe separately, though, and we can either vote it up or down separately from the rest of them, I'm fine with that. But the majority, majority of the other major amendments and new policies, I am either okay with as they're, as they're written, or will kind of allow the consensus of council to move forward with option two on the cats at large, so.
Okay. Councilmember Hickman, then Councilmember Clark, I mean Carter, sorry.
Yeah, just, just to clarify some of my thoughts on the release to the field, you know, I'm willing to support that, and, you know, and understanding the feedback from our staff and others, but I do, I would like to have a notice provision put in there. I think that that helps to avoid any unintended consequences. I think as I've indicated before, I, I really don't support, and I prefer that we do not amend the owner relinquishment section currently, at least. If we get to the point where we need to do that, I'm open to having that conversation. I just don't feel like it's something I'd prefer to do right now. And if we really need staff, which I'm, I'm sure we do, I'd rather have that battle about making it a priority in our budget discussion. And I'm happy to help, you know, in, in those conversations, and, and battle, even though I'm not as much on the front line as I used to be when I was on the, on the committee. And then in the, your tier-two sections, I'm com, I think staff's done a great job, and there's been a lot of collaboration and discussion on these changes, you know, and I know that there are some people that have concerns about the tethering. I do, I would prefer that if we go ahead and adopt the tethering, two provisions that we have in here, and that we work with the community to use it as an educational opportunity, and we grant the exceptions, and I trust staff to have, to create those streamlined, fair process, so that those folks that, you know, that need tethering. And I, and honestly, I can see a situation where it could be a long-term solution for some people, you know, whether it's an act of God-type situation, or somebody like Councilmember Clark mentioned, you know, that, but at least at that point in time, there's a conversation with those people, and we can ensure that there's not a tragic accident with an animal or something, and Trey and his folks can be a part of that conversation. And while the confinement of cats, you know, is something that I have people on both sides of that issue, and, and I even would consider doing nothing, just to be honest, I, you know, I, I am comfortable supporting option number two, if that's what a majority of council, you know, is inclined to do. I do think that having that conversation also is an opportunity to educate our, our community. But I, I do understand that it's hard to roll back, it's hard to impose restrictions when we are so far down this road. But I do want to at least express to you, you know, I do appreciate the, the difficulty of the situation. And while I don't think that the, the events that Councilmember Carter mentioned on the animals for entertainment and festivals, it would apply to those, to those events, and would be a prohibition to those events, so I am going to support, you know, those reasonable restrictions, I think, on city property of animals, you know, exotic animals being used in a, in maybe a cruel or inappropriate, inappropriate manner. So thank you, thank you again for all your hard work.
Councilmember Clark, Carter.
So is riding a pony down Main Street cruel? What determines if they get a permit?
No, as it's currently written, on, on public property, it wouldn't be a permit.
It is not cruel. They do it, what about in February? They do it in the Martin Luther King. I've ridden my horse in the Martin Luther King, I've taken my kids on the pony down Oklahoma City streets on Martin Luther King Day, which is in February. That's cruel? So I, I've been uncomfortable with this whole study session thing about it's voting, not voting, you know? We're just trying to read council, and this whole protocol is still, I'm just not comfortable with it. So, I mean, I'm going to treat this whole piece of paper somewhat like a consent agenda, to me, you know? And I think it would be reasonable to have council person request certain sections of this be debated, just like a certain section of a consent agenda. We get 30 different things. If you have something you feel like that needs debated in greater depth, and voted on individually by council, I think that's a courtesy that each council member should receive. And so, you know, the things that I would like to see pulled off and debated individually, and then voted on, you know, in a, in a vote, would be four sections, which is the 206, owner relinquishment, the tethering, the confinement of cats, and the use of animals in festivals. That would be my request.
All right, is that? Oh, Councilmember Clark.
I think I would support Councilmember Carter's request, and I think you did too, to divide them up, just because I think that'll help with the flow in the meeting and public comment. Otherwise, we're going to have someone say, no, 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 I want to talk about this one, not the whole list. So I think that might be an effective way to approach it in the meeting.
So kind of what I'm hearing is that we have to put each one on consent docket, and then, well, actually, put them all on consent docket, and then we can, each Councilmember can pull which of them off that you want to, or you want to just put, or take those four off, and everything else on consent?
On science reading, we'll have to have a public hearing and a separate vote, but we'll work on drafting it in a way, as Councilmember Carter has suggested, so that it is easier to vote on the specific sections. We don't often do that, but this may be some, a situation where that's called for. So we'll work on that, so you can do, do just what you're describing.
Is that okay? Okay. All right.
All right.
Anybody else? Anybody else? All right.
Thank you very much.
Item two. Is consideration of adjournment to executive session as authorized by Oklahoma statutes, Title 25, Section 307 V3, in order to discuss the acquisition of real property for recreational purposes currently owned by the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services, located in the vicinity of East Robinson Street and 12th Avenue Northeast and East Robinson Street and 24th Avenue Northeast. And as authorized by Title 25, Section 307 V4, to discuss possible litigation associated with University North Park Increment Finance District. I need a motion.
So moved.
So motion to adjourn out of special session and convene into executive session in order to discuss the acquisition of real property for creation, recreational purposes and possible litigation associated with University North Park. All those, you now vote, please.
Aye. I'll vote on here because we can't vote.
We just, since our system's not working out, we just hand vote. All those in favor, right hand? Guys? Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero?